...town council meeting of November 2, 2020 to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kate Thompson, what are you doing? I get to see your lovely face. It's not necessary, but we'll... Chris, do you want to just...
I'm doing...
I know, I get people staring at me. Hold on one second. Chris, you want to just eliminate that?
Yeah, I thought I did.
Okay, still viewing. Not that I mind looking at two blondes, but...
Oh, there we go.
There we go. Okay.
There you go. All set.
Okay. All right, so first up, town council members' remarks on William McGary's retirement as town manager after 11 years of dedicated service to the town. Who would like to start?
I'd like to begin for just a minute.
Sure.
The... Bill McGary, we hired him 11 years ago, but what was interesting about his hiring is Sylvia Thompson and I were on the committee, were the two people from the subcommittee of the council, to interview all the people that we had on our list. And Sylvia and I did so. And we both were supposed to hand to the full council three members, and both of us came up with only one, and that was Bill McGary. And we brought it to the full council, and they said, "But, you know, you're supposed to give us three." And we said, "We couldn't. There was one above every..."
Well, actually, remember, Barbara, though, we didn't have instructions. We weren't told to come up with three. At the time, he was hands down...
Oh, hands down.
Perfect. And so when we went to the council, we said, "Here's the guy." And they're like, "Wait a minute. Who are your top people?"
Exactly.
And then we had to bring people back.
But we also knew, we had talked about it before, because they had expected us to bring two or three people to them, and then they would interview those, and that would be fine. And so we brought only Bill McGary, because he was hands down the best. And so the council said, "Well, no, we have to still listen to two others." And we said, "Okay." And so we brought the other two, and there was just no comparison whatsoever.
And then they understood.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. It was a very easy decision to make when we had interviewed. He was extremely competent, came with a great resume. He was really calm, which was very beneficial to the town. We thought it would work very well, because we'd had two council, two town managers before that that were just simply not the same personality. And Bill McGary worked out really very well. And he's also brought a lot of things to the town that I think the citizens may not realize, but our capital improvement plan came from Bill McGary. He's one of the first persons that started that, so that we could save money in order to spend it, because our budget was in quite a disarray. And Bill helped pull all that together. And I don't even remember who was finance at the time, but I think Bill didn't...
Laura Crapp?
No, 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 she was later...
Jim Lathir. And there were quite a few people that came and went.
Yeah, there were quite a few. And so he really did help put the town on a very strong financial footing, and of course has always been relatively quiet in town. I don't think he's been outrageous by any means, and he's been polite to most people anyway. So I think he served us very well, and he certainly set the town on a really good path. And I really appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks, Barbara. Anyone else?
I'll go ahead. You know, with what Barbara brought up, one of the things that Bill brought to the town was his experience in the police force, and given his background, that he was in the state police. And then he ended up being the chief of police... Was it Norris Smithfield?
No, Smithfield.
Smithfield, okay. He was the chief of police for many years. You did not see where he had a job and then left, and then took another job. He was in that job, I don't know, eight, nine, 10 years, somewhere around there. And then every now and then, he had to step in as the interim manager, because the manager at the time had surgery, or left for a while for whatever reason. So he was the interim manager from time to time, and he was still the chief of police. So what he brought was that wisdom and experience. And for instance, you talk about the budget. One of the problems that we had continuously was overtime, the overtime budget in the police department.
In the police department.
Yep. And it was an awful lot of money. And it was very little time that Bill sat down with our chief, Dave Palmer, and they...
No, no.
No, wait a minute. Was it Jack?
Jack Scunzio.
It was Jack. Oh, it was Jack. It was before your time. Okay. And just like that, he... We had some shift changes, and made a change to the contract, and there was flex time, and then there was this person that worked... I mean, he came up with and worked with the chief, Chief Scunzio, and found a way to decrease that overtime budget, which was out of control. And that's just one little example of what he brought to the town. And that's a budgetary issue, but Bill was very good at delegating and hiring. He just seemed to have a knack for hiring the right people for the right job, and we all benefited. He made us look good because of his experience and his mannerism. He was always polite, always respectful. And, you know, he's... He just was very important to this town, and we're not going to forget all that he did for everyone. So he's a good guy, and we wish him well. We do wish him very well.
Okay, thanks. Scott, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. Bill McGary was very helpful to me personally. And I think one of the things, like in politics and government, like I do, and my biggest fear of losing Bill McGary is the fact that if you understand government, the town manager has a role, and the town council has a role. And I'm just afraid that whoever takes, fills the shoes, that they might not have an appreciation for that, you know? The council has a role, and the town manager has a role, and I don't think a town manager should undercut the town council. The town council is elected by the people. They are accountable to the people, and they make the policy, and the town manager carries it out. And sometimes I wonder if town managers really fully appreciate that. But Bill McGary appreciated his role, and he didn't undercut the town council. And people who had him as a town manager that served on the council were very fortunate that he didn't try to upstage the town council, which I tremendously appreciate, and I hope his successor, whoever that may be, understands that. He certainly was well-qualified. He was... And he didn't... Wasn't a revolving door. He gave quite a few years at the town of Hopkinton, and if he missed. But I think... And I'm going to, hopefully, and I'm sure you will be agreeable, I'm going to move during the council meeting tonight in honor of William A. McGary, because he has stuck it out for the town of Hopkinton. And I think, just for tribute of who he was and his commitment to this town, I think he's worthy of that type of respect. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Sharon, would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought he was going to be here, but at any rate, I wanted to say that during his tenure, I thought he ran a tight ship. I think the town, the Hopkinton Town Budget does not have any fat in it. Everyone has been very responsive to my needs under his leadership, and Bill personally has worked very well with me. And I wanted to tell him that I've taken his advice in organizing the paperwork that's generated by the town council over the past two years, and I now have a two drawer file cabinet almost full. And I wanted to wish him the best in his retirement.
Thanks, Sharon. Yeah, I've worked with Bill. Jeez, there's probably not a day or two that's gone by in the last eight years I haven't talked to him. I've gotten to know him very well. You know, a lot of his advice and suggestions, I always agreed with. He had an amazing ability to take a problem or a situation and look at it from all sides, and it was really pretty unique. And like Scott said, he never really got himself involved in council matters. He would give me the opinion, and then I'd run with it and do whatever I needed to do. But just an amazing person, unparalleled integrity, and I wish he was still staying, to be honest with you. I think he's just a remarkable person and manager, and I hope to see him, you know, at some point in time. And his retirement, I hope him well. I wish him well. That's that. All right. Anyone else? Comments with Bill? Okay. And thank you for his years of dedicated service. Okay. I need a motion to send as a licensing board, folks.
Send move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, next up, hearings. Liquor license renewals, number one. Open a hearing on a renewal for the following liquor licenses. Class A, Hopkinton Liquor Depot, Lynn Marie Finn, president of PLW Hopkinton, Inc., 229 Main Street, Ashaway. Lynn, are you out there? Just *9 to raise your hand, please. Hi, Lynn.
Hi.
They may be a mist of row.
I'm speaking for Hopkinton Liquor Depot.
Okay.
Yep. Store manager at Hopkinton Liquor Depot.
Okay. Okay, next up, I guess... Okay, I'm sorry. Village Place Liquors, Dennis Plant, president of D&amp;M Liquors, Inc., 26 Alton Bradford Road, Bradford. I saw the Plant phone number somewhere. Dennis, are you out there? *9 to raise your hand. Oh, there we go. Dennis Plant?
I am here.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Want to take these ones? What do you want to do? Click these into...
Oh, we could do Class A first.
Yeah, why don't we do Class A? It'd be nice, and then we just flip the page. Okay. Lisa, I guess there's no issues with these licenses, right? I know we heard from the chief.
Correct.
Okay, from everyone else? All the stakeholders, okay?
All right, so I'll make a motion to grant renewal.
Well, we've got some questions about the transfer, and I've got some questions for the Village Place Liquors.
You're supposed to ask the public, too, if they have anything to say.
Yeah. And my question is, on the application, it says...
Dennis?
This is Kevin.
Oh, hi, Kevin.
This is Kevin.
Yes.
Hi. The issue of renewing the license is what we're doing now. Later on in the agenda, we're going to talk about the transfer. So I think at this part of the meeting, we should limit ourselves to the issue of...
Issue of the license.
Okay, got you.
Okay.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to renew the license, the Class A license, for...
Hopkinton Liquor Depot?
Yeah, for Hopkinton Liquor Depot and Village Place Liquors.
Seconded.
Subject to...
Subject to...
Subject to all state and town regulations being met and all town taxes current prior to issue.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, next up, Class BV, Brick Oven Restaurant. Keith Knott, president, Brick Oven Restaurant, Ashaway, 209 Main Street. Is Keith here? *9 to raise your hand, Keith. Please.
I did not speak with him recently, but when he was in, when he filed, we mentioned it would be a remote meeting. I don't know if he called the office since to find out what the contact information was.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll put that one on pause. I don't see any hand raised. Next up, Fender Hill Country Club LLC, Ron Levesque, president, 33 Wheeler Lane, Hope Valley, Rhode Island, 02832, with Courtesy Cart. Is anybody... Ron Levesque here from Fender Hill Country Club?
I'm here, Denise Teklinsky.
Oh, hi, Denise. Hi.
How are you?
Oh, good, thanks. Okay. Next up, Lucky House Restaurant, Danny Zhang, president, 32 Main Street, Ashaway. Danny, you out there?
I did provide an agenda to Mr. Zhang.
Okay. Oh, hold on. Danny, you out there? Danny Zhang? I got a hand raised, but *6 to unmute yourself. Danny Zhang, you out there? Nope, I don't know. This is tough to do remotely. A lot of phone numbers here. One more time, Danny Zhang, you out there? Nope, I guess not. Okay. Next up, Wood River Golf.
Hi.
Oh, hey, there he is. Thank, Danny.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Next up, Wood River Golf LLC, Kate Thompson, president, 78A, Woodville Alton Road, Hope Valley, with Courtesy Cart. I know Kate's here. She was staring at me earlier. Kate, you out there? *9 to raise your hand. Where is she? Oh, there she is.
If we're going to do these, we should ask the public as we go through.
Kate, you out there?
Yes.
I see her there. Oh, yes. Okay, all right. Class BV liquor licenses, okay, that's it. Everyone's present.
Except for Brick Oven.
Yeah, except for Keith. One more shout out to Keith Knott. *9 to raise your hand, Keith.
*6 to unmute.
And *6 to unmute. Looks like Scott will not have a place to go tomorrow.
He had asked me about it, you know. I'm...
Just kidding.
If they sold stock in Brick Oven, I'd probably be one of the top stockholders.
All right, Lisa, no issues with these Class BV licenses, right?
Right, correct. There was been nothing that chief reported that all were always in order.
Okay. Anyone out in the public have any concerns about the issuance of these Class BV licenses? *9 to raise your hand. I don't see any. Okay. Want to make a motion?
Yeah. A motion to grant renewal to Class BV licenses, subject to all state and town regulations being met and all town taxes current prior to issue. Do we want to include Brick Oven?
Yeah, what... Kevin or Lisa? No?
Yeah. Okay. So it'll be for the three, Fender Hill Country Club, Lucky House Restaurant, and Wood River Golf.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
So it's required that they physically have to have a representative of the owner? Is that correct?
It seems that way. Yep.
Typically, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
One more shout out for Keith Knott, Brick Oven. Okay. All right, we had a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the Class BV? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next up, Class B Limited, Main Street Pizza, Chris Hawinski, president, CHS LLC, 229 Main Street, Ashaway. Is Chris out there? *9, Chris?
It may be his manager.
Yeah.
I gave him the agenda.
Oh, okay. *9 to raise your hand for Main Street Pizza. Chris Hawinski. Okay, I thought I saw a name in here that looked familiar, but... Let me see. I guess not. Okay. I guess we'll have to... Lisa, there's no issues with that one either, right? The Class B for Main Street?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I guess we'll have to put that one on pause, I guess. Class C license, Village Place Studio LLC, Sherry Disjardins, president and Norbit Ansay manager, 999 Main Street, Hope Valley. Sherry or Norbit? Nope. Sherry. Sherry, you out there? I see... Sherry, *6 to unmute yourself. I see your hand.
Hey, folks.
Hi, Sherry.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Here, Sherry here with my husband...
The quiet one.
Lisa, so this class...
My partner, right? Yes.
This Class C license, all fees paid, notices posted, right?
There were no issues with that one either.
Okay. Anyone out there wishing to speak for or against this Class C? It's a very new Class C liquor license for Village Place. You're not open yet technically, right, Sherry?
No, we are not. We're watching the COVID situation at this point right now, Frank, and hoping maybe for December.
Okay. Yep.
That will be open, fingers crossed.
Okay. All right.
Then I'll make a motion to grant renewal to...
Village Place.
Yeah. To Village Place Studio, subject to all state and town regulations being met and all town taxes current prior to issue.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I'll make a motion to set the limit on liquor licenses. Class A, two. Class BV, three. Class C, one.
Is there a reason you want to put three instead of four?
Class BV is three because we had to hold on Brick Oven Restaurant. Have to pause until they are in front of us.
I don't know. But I think... I don't think we need to... Kevin or Lisa?
Should we just do A and C?
No, I think we should list the number, because the number's not...
That's their limit.
Yeah, that's our limit, yeah.
I think you can include them.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Then we'll make a motion to set the limit on liquor licenses. Class A, two. Class BV, four. Class C, one. And Class BV Limited, one.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, next up, liquor license transfer owner hearing. Number one, open a hearing on an application for a transfer of a Class A liquor license filed by D&amp;M Liquors Incorporated. Dennis Plant, president, DBA Village Wine and Spirits, 26 Alton Bradford Road, Bradford, Rhode Island, 02808, for property located at 26 Alton Bradford Road, transferring to M2 Wines LLC. Venkat Datta Panini, president, 5 White Hall Way, Bellingham, Mass. 02019. Let's see, Mr. Datta Panini. You out there, Mr. Datta Panini? *9 to... Oh. Oh, there he is. Okay. Venkat, are you out there?
Yes, I'm here. How are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
I'm doing good.
Good, good, good. Lisa, we all set with this? I think there was some money owed to some vendors, perhaps?
Yes, there was. Rhode Island distributors, I believe that probably will be satisfied, but when you make your motion, it should be subject to if you choose to approve the transfer.
Okay.
And I don't have the email in front of me. I don't remember the names of who...
Dennis Plant.
No, the names of who they owed money to.
Oh, yeah.
And to make it part of the motion.
I believe I left it on the counter. There might be on the table in there.
Could we also say to all vendors?
Yes.
I just don't know whether other vendors will come forward.
I think I could put a finger on it here.
It came late, so it's not in the packet.
Oh, it's not? I thought I saw it in here.
No, there was a... I left a copy on the counter.
There's a copy somewhere. Do you see it, Barbara? In that paperwork, maybe?
Yeah, that's... You can see.
Oh, here it is, okay.
Oh, okay, we got it here. Thanks, Lisa. Okay. Yeah, okay. Anyway, I saw it somewhere. Okay. All right.
Who are the vendors?
Yeah, who are the vendors, Sophia?
The vendors are Rhode Island Distributing, and that's $8,903.08, and Horizon Beverage, $4,585.39 owed to the... Let's see.
It's owed to the Rhode Island Distributing and Horizon Beverage from...
D&amp;M Liquors.
D&amp;M.
Yeah, and it was referenced by Sanapi Law Associates.
So Dennis, are you out there? Oh, there you are. Hi, Dennis?
All right, I'm here.
Oh, thank you. Okay. So now, what are you selling at, Dennis?
Yes, I am.
Yeah. When were they that long, I guess, right?
It's been about two and a half years.
Okay, yep. You're still over by Camp Yagoo, right?
Correct, I'm still a resident, correct.
Yep, yep. Okay. Any questions for the applicant or the seller, I guess, council?
I've got one. On your application...
Is this for Venkat or Dennis?
This is for M2 Wines.
Okay.
And one of the questions was, does the applicant own the premises? And the answer was no. And is the property leased? And it said no. So what does that mean? You rent it?
Oh, so, yes, it's a lease, and I can send you a lease contract for that.
Okay, so on the application, is the property leased? It should have been yes.
Okay, yeah. Maybe my mistake, I'm sorry.
That's fine, okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Dennis or Venkat?
Yeah, I don't know what experience they've had in anywhere else.
Venkat?
Yeah.
Yeah, Venkat, maybe you could just give us a... Yeah, Venkat, maybe you could just give us a
Sure, yeah, so I worked, I worked in liquor store while, as a student back in college. Not only just that, I mean, like, my wife owns a liquor license and property, and so I manage the store for her, so I do have experience.
That sounds knowledgeable.
Anyone out in the community wishing to speak for or against this transfer? Star nine to, raise your hand. I see no hands. Okay. All right, folks.
All right, I'll make a motion to grant approval to the transfer of D&amp;M Liquors to
M2 Wines?
Yeah, M2, M2 Wines. Subject to D&amp;M Liquors paying the debt, Rhode Island Distributing of $8,903.08. And Horizon Beverage, $4,585.39. And also subject to all state and town regulations being met in all town taxes current prior to issue.
A second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Dennis, just curious, are you going to satisfy that, or is that going to be passed on to Venkat?
Oh, no, it'll be satisfied. I'm, I'm still open until we physically close.
Oh, okay.
Still bringing an in.
Okay.
I have a good reaction, but all distributors, this is just standard procedure of what they do throughout the whole state when, when there's a transfer of license.
Okay, yep, all right. Okay, we had a motion made and was it seconded? Yes, okay. Any further discussion on this transfer license? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wish you good luck.
Thank you, Venkat and Dennis, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate it, guys.
Take care, guys, thank you. Okay. Next up, vicshiling license renewals. Number one, open a hearing on a renewal for the following vicshiling licenses. Back in Time Herb Farm and Kitchen, 493 Main Street, Hopkinton. Brick Oven Restaurant, 209 Main Street, Ashaway. Dunkin' Donuts, 231 Main Street, Ashaway. Fender Hill Country Club, 33 Wheeler Lane, Hope Valley. Lucky House Restaurant, 30, 32 Main Street, Ashaway. Mon Pa's Country Cooking, 865 Main Street, Hope Valley. Mon Pa's Country Store, 1044 Main Street, Hope Valley. Main Street Pizza, 229 Main Street, Ashaway. Pete's Grocery, 244 B Ashaway Road, Bradford. Spring Street Market, 1 Spring Street, Hope Valley. West Bakery, 995 Main Street, Hope Valley. Wood River Golf, 78A Woodville Alton Road, Hope Valley. No issues there, Lisa, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any comments on the council on these vicshiling licenses, okay? Public, any questions, comments? Star nine to raise your hand? Okay, I see no hands.
All right, so I'll make a motion to grant renewal to the licenses, subject to all state and town regulations being met in all town taxes current prior to issue.
A second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion, folks? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Next up, consent agenda, approved town council meeting minutes of October 19th, 2020.
Excuse me, Frank?
Yes, Lisa.
Adhere as a licensing board.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Motion to adjourn as licensing board and reconvene as counsel.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, next up, consent agenda, approved town council meeting minutes of October 19th, 2020. Accept the September 28th, 2020 transcript as the record of Centrica Business Solutions and Kamoli Granite Company, Inc., hearing. Accept the October 14th, 2020 transcript as a record of the Centrica Business Solutions and Kamoli Granite Company, Inc., hearing. Approve abatement due to tax value changes submitted by the tax assessor. Ratify and approve the 11th Local Declaration of Emergency from November 2nd, 2020 through January 3rd, 2021. I just signed that tonight, so.
Frank, I want to pull the September 28th transcript.
Okay. Anything else, folks?
Yes, when I wanted, so.
All right, Sharon, what page?
Okay, on page two, line 21. It says, "Over the past two years, I have served," it, the word is this, counsel.
Okay.
And then on page three, line 16. The word, the word identifies, it should be sa-, should become "and been advised." Three words, A-N-D-B-E-E-N-A-D-V-I-F-E-D replaces identifies.
Oh, okay.
And then line 22. "Any perception the word is from, not for, my participation." And line 25. That more so means it should have been nor do. K-N-O-R, space, than do.
Okay, that's 25, right?
Mm-hmm, line 25.
Okay. Okay. And Scott, what page and what line?
Okay, page 22 and 76. I don't really, I'm not a big person on changing the transcripts, because that's really the the stenographers, but on page 22, it would be line 23, says Fox Falls. I'm pretty sure I'm very clear saying Clarks Falls, and I believe it's correctly. C-L, capital C, L-A-R-K, apostrophe S.
What line is that, Scott?
23. My mother's original. And the other is
What page and line?
Page 76, line 23. I believe Barbara Green, her last name should have an E. You might want to check on that, Lisa. But I believe it's E, and she's a former deputy town clerk of Hopkinton. Those are the only two I have. So just check that and make the change, but I believe she had an E at the end of her la-, last name. I believe that family, pretty positive.
What line was that, Scott?
Uh, it would be number 23 on page 76, and pretty sure
Yeah.
Her father-in-law used to be the chief, fire chief a long time in Dunce Quoners years ago.
Okay. All right, anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve the consent agenda with some changes.
Including the suggested change that, on Barbara Green, which I believe has
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
With all changes.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, great. Yeah, I don't have anything under my report, so probably shouldn't have had, shouldn't have had that there, but next up, old business, number one, discuss, consider, and vote on a motion to either approve or reject the petition for an amendment to the Hopkinton Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map and an amendment to the Hopkinton Zoning Ordinance and map filed by Centrica Business Solutions, 1484 Candlewood Road, Suite T through W, Hanover, Maryland, 21076. And Kamoli Granite Company, Incorporated, 15 Franklin Street, Westerly, Rhode Island, 02891. For property located at Zero Chase Hill Road, identified as a portion of Assessor's Plat 2, Lot 73, an RFR 80 zone, following completion and closing of the public hearing on October 13th, 2020.
A move that we deny.
I would like to, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Currently, before the council, are the applications for amendments to the Hopkinton Zoning Ordinance and the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment filed by Centrica Business Solutions, 1484 Candlewood Road, Street, State, T dash, Suite T dash W, Hanover, Maryland, 21076. And Kamoli Granite Company, Inc., 15 Franklin Street, Westerly, Rhode Island, 02891. For property located at Zero Chase Hill Road, identified as a portion of AP 2, Lot 73, an RFR 80 zone. The application is filed in accordance with Chapter 16 of the zoning ordinances of the Town of Hopkinton as amended. The applicants propose to install a ground-mounted photovoltaic solar array on the property. The proposal to utilize the property requires approval of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment from low-density residential to commercial, and a zoning map amendment from RFR 80 to commercial-special. The required public hearing was conducted on September 28th, 2020, and October 13th, 2020, and was completed and closed on October 13th, 2020. I make a motion to approve the applications, seeking the zoning amendment, changing the zoning classification for the parcels described above, from RFR 80 to commercial-special, in accordance with Section 16A, 2 through E of the zoning ordinances of the Town of Hopkinton as amended. And also to approve the applications for the requested amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map referred to above, and to thereby adopt the two proposed ordinances based upon the following findings, and subject to the following conditions. The findings are as follows. Subject to the conditions which follow, and based upon the evidence and testimony of record presented and submitted at the public hearing referred to above, as well as the Comprehensive Plan as amended, including its stated goals and recommendation, the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, and the proposed Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment to map 13, are both consistent with the general authority reserved to the council under the Comprehensive Plan to identify those areas in town where such uses are appropriate, and to identify the condition under which uses may exist, and specifically with the following aspect of the Comprehensive Plan. Conservation goal number one, to promote conservation of Hopkinton's natural resources, particularly the protection of the ground and surface waters. Natural resources goal number one, to preserve, conserve, and protect the significant natural resources of Hopkinton as an endowment for the future of the town. Natural resources goal number five, to provoke energy self-sufficiency using renewable energy and energy conservation. Consistency with state guide plans, referenced at page two of Comprehensive Plan, including those addressing energy, pages 40 to 41, strategic energy planning, page 41, renewable energy, page 43, and challenges, page 44. Public services and facilities goal number three, to provide a safe, high-quality, and sufficient drinking water supply to the town, along with effective wastewater management and solid waste disposal reduction, which is sensitive to environmental concerns and growth management. Public services and facilities goals number five and number 17, to reduce Hopkinton's energy consumption and help implement Recommendation 14, which is to evaluate the feasibility and cost of installing photovoltaic and/or wind-powered electricity generating technologies. And Recommendation 18, which is to expand the current regu-, zoning regulations allowance of photovoltaic installations in residential districts. Economic development goal number one, provide for expansion of the town's tax base by encouraging development of new and existing light and/or heavy industrial and office commercial businesses. And its recommendation number four, and land use goals number seven and 20, use the future land use plan to update and improve the zoning ordinance, which should be consistent with the future land use map. It is further found that the changes proposed will provide benefits to the town in terms of removing at least one significant pre-existing non-conforming use on the property in question, i.e. the stone quarry and related uses associated with the active quarry mining. Enhanced tax revenues to be received from the property as a result of the development of the solar array that the changes proposed will promote an important local, state, and national objective, seeking alternate energy sources that are safe for the environment and the citizens of Hopkinton. That the proposed changes will not adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of the town, and are in the best interests of the community. That the proposed changes are suitable to the character of the location in question, and constitute a non-noxious use, and that the proposed use is in conformance with the provisions of the Comprehensive Plan as set forth above. Then we have conditions. These are the conditions for the Kamoli Solar Property and Centrica Business Solutions. As conditions for the approval of the proposed changes, the petitioners and/or their successors in interest must adhere to the following. Number one. The zoning district classifications are changed from residential RFR 80 to commercial-special, with the restrictions that the property's use hereafter is limited to the code 486 Photovoltaic Solar Energy Systems, along with the restrictions further placed upon the use stated in Chapter 134, in effect as of the time the applications were substantially completed and filed with the town. And with the further conditions that, A, the zoning designations for the properties should revert back to RFR 80 zone, subject to further hearing and action by the Hopkinton Town Council pursuant to RIGL, Section 452453, once the proposed use and/or actual use of the properties as an operating photovoltaic solar energy system is abandoned or terminated. Consistent with the intent of the Town Council, that no other commercial use of the property is hereafter authorized. And B, that the applicants have achieved, received assurances from National Grid that the use of the properties as an operating photovoltaic solar energy system, otherwise known as a PSES, as proposed, has received the assurance from Nation-, from National Grid that such an interconnection approval will be given final approval by National Grid at the appropriate time, which is at the completion of the combined project. Number two. The applicants are hereby allowed to expand upon the coverage restrictions otherwise set forth in Chapter 246, Section A 13, of the town ordinances and adopted January 22nd, 2019, beyond the 3% or 3 acres, so that the fenced-in land area within AP 2, Lot 73 delineated as Land Condominium Unit 2, upon which the solar array will be constructed, may consist of no greater than 9.07 acres, and as shown in as zoning amendment concept B, drawing number C1, by ESS Group of the revised plans submitted on October 9th, 2020, by the applicant's attorney, which is incorporated herein by reference. Number three. All decommissioning and other provisions in place for photovoltaic solar energy systems as set forth in Chapter 134 as amended, as well as under Hopkinton Planning Board requirements, shall be complied with, including but not limited to the posting of a decommissioning cash escrow bond in an amount determined by the planning board. Number four. To the extent and in the manner determined and required by the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, DEM, if any, the applicants and/or their successors and assigns shall remediate any adverse environmental conditions resulting from the operation and location of the former junkyard automobile graveyard on the site. Number five. Within a reasonable time following decommissioning of the proposed PSES facility on the site, the applicants and/or their successors and assigns shall convey by appropriate legal instrument a conservation easement for the property in question to be conveyed for the benefit of the Hopkinton Land Trust, its successors, and/or assigns. Number six. In conjunction with the decommissioning and other provisions referred to above, and in addition to the decommissioning cash escrow bond described above, the petition, petitioners shall prepare a reforestation plan in consultation with the Hopkinton Land Trust to be approved by the planning board, and post an additional cash escrow bond in a reasonable amount to be determined by the planning board, designed to ensure implementation and completion of the reforestation plan so approved. Number seven. All property not within the PSES fence line within AP 2, Lot 73, delineated as Land Condominium Unit 2, as proposed, shall be conveyed by appropriate legal instrument to the Hopkinton Land Trust as a conservation easement to be developed by the trust for the benefit of the public. Number eight. All quarry and mining operations on the site shall cease permanently and immediately on passage of this ordinance before commencement of the construction of the PSES facility contemplated for the site. Number nine. The bottom of the perimeter fencing required by Section 5.3 of Chapter 134 shall be raised six inches above the ground, so as to allow migratory passage of small species through the site. Number 10. The applicant shall prepare and submit to the planning board for approval a reasonable plan designed to sustain the native species in and around the PSES during its operation until the facility's closure. Number 11. Number 11, while operating, the noise levels from the equipment within the PSES shall not exceed the World Health Organization's standard of 40 decibels measured at the property boundary lines. The applicant shall pay for an independent qualified company selected by the town to conduct appropriate sound testing before logging and construction have commenced, and again after the project is completed and operational. Number 12, during or after construction, no blasting, chemicals, or herbicides are allowed, and all topsoil will remain on-site, and the town's engineer or representative shall be allowed to do periodic inspections, and the applicant shall reimburse the town for this cost, and the applicants and future owners will be required to submit any and all inspection reports to the town manager or his representative every month during construction of the PSES project. Number 13, during the site preparation and installation stages of the construction of the PSES, such work shall be performed only during the Monday through Friday workweek and only between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. daily, and the applicants, in coordination with the Hopkinton Police Department, will arrange for appropriate public safety oversight to help manage the arrival and departure from the site of all large construction vehicles during the preparation and installation phase of the PSES project, to assist in the prevention of any injury and/or accidents involving the public's use of the roadway during construction. Number 14, waivers that were requested by the applicant, including septic system and evidence of water supply, are hereby approved. Number 15, prior to construction, applicants will sign Appendix B Riedem's Sample Stormwater Facilities Maintenance Agreement between the town and the landowners. Number 16, after completion of the project, the applicants and any future owners will allow the town to conduct an inspection in April of every year for the life of the project, and will reimburse the town for this cost, and... Number 17, the adoption of these ordinances is consistent with the town of Hopkinton's comprehensive plan as noted earlier, and also with the plan's objective LU1, restricting, remediating, and abrogating potential polluting land uses, and with the plan's goal ED3, targeting development that is consistent with eliminating anything that is adverse to the quality of life, including establishing business interests that will have limited impact to the environment.
Okay, we have a second?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, Sharon has to recuse, so I'll go with Sylvia.
I've got a question. I don't think I heard in your motion, Barbara, that they could only exit onto 216 because they agreed to that. I don't think that was in there.
That was not.
Okay.
That was not. I would think that, however, since number...
Isn't that the only way to get there?
No, because they could exit onto Route 3, and that road's even worse because of the curves.
We could make an amendment to number 13, which is where they will work with the police department.
Public Safety.
Yeah, will arrange the appropriate public safety oversight. I would think that that would be under that.
So Scott, and you can amend it to include that.
All right, so I would amend number 13
To include?
To include that all traffic will only enter Chase Hill Road from Route 2, enter and exit Chase Hill Road from Route 216.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further comments, Sylvia?
No, I've stated that because of the road even exiting onto 216, I did not vote for the Shurenza project, and because of the road and the little bridge, and I can't vote for this one because of the road and the bridge. So I'm opposed to it.
But if they're not going...
Even with police escort.
Right, but they're not going to be going over the bridge. The bridge wouldn't be part of it.
Well, there's a little bridge before you get on to exit. When you exit Chase Hill Road, you have to go over the little bridge to get to 216.
That's on, that's on the 91 side.
Well, anyway, there's a little bridge there. I mean, there's a stream there, remember?
I know, but...
So it's unimportant. I have a problem with it.
I would like to change, I actually think that we made a mistake, because the entrance and exit should not be onto 216, it should be onto Route 3.
No, that's even worse. Have you driven that road? There's almost a 90-degree turn.
Yeah, but that's what the semis do.
No, I'm not talking about when they exit onto Route 3. I'm talking about the Chase Hill Road. If they leave the project and take a left because they want to go Route 3, when you're traveling along that road, there's this extreme curve, and that's why the applicant said, "We won't go that way, we'll go the other way."
If you'd like 216, it's fine.
That's what they agreed to.
That's what you made in your motion.
I understand.
Scott.
So you're all done with amendments? We gotta, we gotta vote for the amendment first and then anything?
Well, discussion.
Yeah, we're on discussion. Go ahead, Scott.
First of all, I know a lot of people will be very disappointed in me supporting this, considering my anti-solar record, and you deserve an explanation because I'm your elected official. I don't particularly relish voting on this proposal the day before an election, but it is what it is. One of the problems, I think, in this town, and I think the council and previous councils have made some mistakes, and they've approved some solar that didn't deserve to be approved, my opinion, and when I had a chance, I voted accordingly. But I think there's a few things that I'd like to state. I did make a personal visit of the property with the council president, Mr. Landalpe, with the two Kamolis, and I did visit the site, and I think what people have to take into consideration, they did alter the plans away from the river, and that's a very important thing, and I know Elaine Calderon spoke, and she wanted that change to be made, and that was done. I've gotten very positive statements from the land trust, and they've made positive statements publicly. The land trust is going to benefit. I realize there's support and opposition to this, but, you know, and I've opposed, I think my anti-solar bona fides has been established, so I don't think I have to apologize. But you can't be against everything and you can't be for everything. Now, I remember a speech that Adley Stevenson gave in one time, and he said something like, something like this, "The issue before us is not what we're against, but what we are for." And I'm for Hopkinton moving forward in addressing things like the non-conforming use, which Councilor Kapalba mentioned, and also doing with, whether it's brownfields, whether it's legally a brownfield, but we do have a place that was certainly a quarry, it was certainly a place where junk cars were buried, and there's some legitimate issues there, and I'm delighted, particularly because I wouldn't probably vote for it unless the DEM was involved. As you know, when I did question Ms. Rocha about the DEM situation, I think it's very important that we protect the environment, and like I said, I believe that this town, this council, in the previous council at least, I've made some wrong decisions on solar, but that's bridge water over the dam. My voting record speaks for itself. I have a high regard for the planning board, and I don't really like to go against a planning board, but they're going to have a role in this afterwards. And I'm really, and if you have the seal of approval of the Department of Environmental Management, that's very important. I've already touched on the decisions of the past. We certainly have addressed solar issues. The interesting thing with this case in particular, it's not near any houses, there was no known of butters that came out against it, unlike, like solar's up at the Lisa Lane and Francis Baba Drive, and that one I was really against, and it still passed, but, you know, on the winning side sometimes and on the losing side the other time. I've already addressed, I usually make an outline or notes, I've already addressed the non-conforming use, and we have a lot of them in town, and that's something that should at least enter into a decision. They did make changes in the plan, which I've already met. There's been input, I've heard from multiple board members in private conversations, both pro and con, so no need to say you can claim that there's like unanimous agreement on it. I've talked to Kevin McAllister quite a bit, the town planner, I've talked to board members and the community at large has different views. I'm trying to be a good listener, and I like to address something about the Shurenzia thing. I knew this, I go to Shurenzias multiple generations, I knew the Perrys multiple generations. As far as the Kamoli, I knew Dick Kamoli, George's father, and David's father. That's what you get when you live in an area all your life, but I don't consider the Shurenzia situation the same as, in fact, it's not even close to the situation on the Chase Hill one, specifically because you're not dealing with a place where we knew there was a junkyard, and we know there's buried vehicles, and there was no quarry where the Shurenzia property was, so they're not a comparable situation, I mean, just by those facts. I know I'm going to annoy a lot of people by my vote, and I might pay for it tomorrow, but that being said, I believe it's the best vote for the town of Hopkinton. I think it's a solar proposal that should be adopted, and I think some of the other ones that carried during my council term should have lost, but they didn't, and that's what it is. So my conscience is clear, I don't, I probably want to appreciate the consequences of what I'm doing now, but I'm going to vote for it because I think it's in the best interest of the town of Hopkins. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I wrote down 12 reasons why I believe this project should be approved. The first three deal with the comprehensive plan, they may overlap some of the things that Barbara mentioned in the conformance of the comprehensive plan. Number one, conformance of the comp plan. A, goals, policies, and recommendations, natural resources goals, page 29. Policy, natural resources, five, promote energy self-sufficiency using renewable energy. Number two, policy, PSF 17, encourage renewable energy projects in the private sector, public services and facilities, page 55. Number three, economic development, goals, policies, and recommendations, pages 66 to 68. Goal ED1, provide for the expansion of the town's tax base by encouraging development of new and existing light and/or heavy industrial and office commercial business. Recommendation number four, identify and zone new areas for manufacturing and commercial sites. The rest of the conditions or the items I cite for approval do not have anything to do with the comprehensive plan. Number four, it gets rid of, again, the legal non-conforming use, which is the quarry, and from a planning perspective, you want to eliminate those uses in town. Number five, Noah Butters spoke against the project. Number six, minimal tree elimination. Number seven, cleans up Perry Salvage Yard. Scott and I walked the property one Sunday, I believe, or Saturday, I forget which, I think it was a Sunday, and there's glass, there's distributed cap wires still, and, you know, there was 1,500 to 2,000 cars at one point on that property, and it just is still a mess, in my opinion. So I'm glad that's included in Barbara's motion. Number eight, eliminates gravel extraction permanently. Number nine, land trust and conservation benefits in perpetuity. Number 10, project moved almost 900 feet from the Pawtucket River and Pollicoon Bridge. That triangle that Scott spoke of earlier was a huge concern for me, and I thank Elaine Calderon for her continued efforts in calling me to make that a part of my efforts, and it seemed like it worked out. Number 11, subdivision is not necessary per legal. And number 12, newly revised 2019 PSES solar ordinance states the town of Hopkinton encourages solar PSES on gravel banks and brownfields. So those are my 12 reasons. Anything else from the council? Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Oh, the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Frank, we gotta, we gotta vote amendment to condition 13 first, and then assuming that passes, then we gotta vote on the main motion as amended.
Okay. Barbara?
I've already made it.
Okay. Motion made and was seconded by Scott. Okay. Motion to approve the amendment on number 13.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, that's four approvals. Okay, then the...
What about Sharon?
She's got to recuse.
I'm not going to vote on this. I recuse myself, remember? I have to abstain.
We know, we know.
We've already had a second on the main motion.
Okay, the main motion was seconded. All those in favor of the main motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those not opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, I'm sorry.
Sylvia Thompson, opposed.
Opposed, okay. Three to one, the motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Barbara, for all your efforts, and Scott, thank you for your leadership on that, I appreciate it. Okay, next up, under new business, discuss and possibly vote on the appointment of Brian Rosso to serve as interim town manager effective November 2, today, 2020, and continuing until further action by the Hopkinton Town Council.
I move that we appoint Brian Rosso to serve as the interim town manager effective today, and continuing until further action by the Hopkinton Town Council, and that it be at the pay scale of the town manager, because he will be assuming the roles of Finance Director and interim town manager.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further comments, folks?
No, I think he'll be great.
Yep, thank you for your stepping up to fill those big shoes and your current shoes. Thank you, Brian. Everybody's shoes. Anyway.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded, was it, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, any further comments?
I would just say that Brian is a very valuable member of our staff, and I know we have the chief of police here, he's a very memorable, a very important part of the staff here in the town of Hopkinton, and it takes a lot of people to run the town of Hopkinton, and I hope that people step up and volunteer, and if you think you have the skills, even apply to work for the town of Hopkinton. We are a great town, and our slogan is "Not to be silent or off our God," and we should just remember that.
God knows we're not. And God knows we're not.
So I will leave it there, but welcome aboard, Brian, and I'm sure you'll do a good job.
Okay. Any further comments by the council? Okay, having heard none, the motion was made and seconded. All those in favor of Brian, appointing Brian Rosso as interim town manager?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous, Lisa. Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next up, under new business, number two, chief of police report, Drug Tape Act, Community First Responder Event, 111420, and the Hope Initiative, Assistance for Opioid Users and Their Families, and then the second bullet point was exploration into police body and cruiser cameras, Rhode Island Police Chiefs, 20 for 2020. Chief Palmer, you have the four.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I move on to that, I just want to make a quick comment on...
You cannot hear.
Speak right into the mic, chief.
I want to make a quick comment on Bill McGary. I want to thank him for hiring me, and I want to thank Councilwoman Thompson for saying that he had a good knack of hiring the right person at the right time, so I'll take that as my compliment. Just to give him a quick due is that he spent 11 years here as a town manager, he spent 25 years at the state police, and he finishes the number...
Can he speak a little bit louder?
Yeah, chief, right into the mic, please.
He finishes as a number four person there, inspector, and he brought Kalia, it's a national accreditation, to state police. It was a monumental achievement, a great deal of work went into that, and he then went to Smithfield and did the same thing there. So he's got about, at Smithfield, I think he was there close to 14 or 15 years, so he's got close to 50 years in public service, so I want to acknowledge that and wish his family and he health and happiness.
So I wanted to acknowledge that and wish his family and he health and happiness in his retirement.
Thank you, chief. Well said.
Move on to the first agenda there. I wanted to bring to the public's attention, and I know it's been mentioned in the past there, this past October 24th, we had the DEA drug takeback, where we accumulated 66 pounds of drugs that were delivered to DEA, got it off the street, got it out of people's medicine cabinets, where they, nobody could abuse it. I encourage people to bring that to the police station. I know that was the, the 24th is the day that we bring it up there, and we use that as an advertisement to get people to bring it in, but recognize that that drop box is there 24/7, and there's no questions asked, you come there, drop it off, and it gets it off the street. I also wanted to mention during this agenda is that some of the other corroborations that we have with other organizations that fight mental health and addiction, and specifically opioid addiction, because that's what is driving the overdose deaths here in Rhode Island and in Hopkinton. Hopkinton, we've had five overdose deaths this year, and last year in Rhode Island, they had well over 300 overdose deaths in Rhode Island. So it's a, it's a problem, and I want to get it out to the public that there is a lot of organizations to get help to the, to the users, but also to their family members. And when we were having our takeback on the 24th, Anita Jacobson, who is, who runs Community First Responders Program, it's out of URI, it's a pharmacy-driven program, they, they go to the rural communities because there's not as many programs there, and they, and they're focusing mostly on that. And they called up Detective Forbes on the 24th, actually on the 21st, to see if they, we would agree on the DEA takeback to open up a booth there and possibly hand out Narcan. Just quickly, Narcan is the, is a nasal spray that reverses the opioid overdose, and they, surprisingly enough, gave out 25 doses on that day with very minimal advertisement. Each one of those Narcan kits could save a life. It was so successful, so we reached out back to them, and so we decided we should have another one. And so we have one on November 14th from 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock, and I want to get out to the public, it's not just for users, it's for the family members. The message for the first responder, community first responders is this, that each and every person could be a first responder at some point. And if you have loved ones, or friends, or coworkers that you believe are getting opioids, possibly from the street, because that's where the fentanyl is coming from, which is causing the overdose, then you should consider coming down there and getting a kit. It's anonymous, we decided to get, change it from the police department, we thought it would, might be more attractive if somebody come down there to go to the fire department. Reached out to Chief Lee and Chief Caswell, they were agreeing, agreeable on that, and so anybody that wants to go down there can, can get that and, and have that for a kit, possibly save something that you know. That, we also want to mention that we, there's another Hope Initiative that the Hopkinton Police Department has signed up and corroborates with the Rhode Island State Police. Five of our members are, are corroborated with them, and what it is, is that we try and get people that are, are most susceptible for an overdose, after some time has passed after a possible overdose, is we go reach out to them and try and convince them to get the help, and we offer all kinds of services to get them the help. So these are things that, that are out there. You have BH Link, which is a, is a behavioral health and addiction resource that we have, and they're out there. I'm not gonna give you all the numbers here, all I ask is you go out on the Hopkinton Facebook, they're all on there, and if you have any questions at all, you can call any one of our members of the detective division and/or myself. We'll get you the numbers that you need, and we'll get you the help that you need.
I have a question. You were saying November 14th will be at the fire station in Hope Valley or Ashway?
No, Hope Valley.
Hope Valley Fire Station.
Right. Right, so 10, 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock on the 14th.
Any drugs, it's not just opioids, any drugs, any old prescriptions you want to get, or is it primarily any painkillers, that sort of thing?
Well, these are two different things, though. The prescription takeback is a receptory that we have at the police station, the foyer there. Giving out the Narcan is, is gonna be, is a totally different situation, different program.
But do you accept all, do you accept any prescription?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay. The second, the second one is the body cam and in cruiser cameras. I think the council is aware that going back about three months ago, the, all the police chiefs signed on to what is called the 20 for 2020, which is a pledge from each one of the 39 police chiefs to, to show more transparency and to be, and to take these pledges to help foster a better community relationship between the community that they, we serve and the police department. So in one of those, of those 20 pledges that we have there, it is that we would bring, bring the fact that we're exploring having body cams and in-service cameras in the police cars. Again, it's about transparency and having, having the public trust us. I believe our, I believe our police officers do a very nice job, we can, there's always room for improvement, and so that's what that 20 for 2020 is. Number 10 in that list is, is that we would bring this to the, the body of the government, and obviously you're the body of the government, so to let you know that, that we're exploring that. The Rhode Island Police Chiefs Association are the, is driving this, they're, they're researching it, and there's, there's a plus to it, but obviously there's always gonna be a minus to it, and I think you know what that is, and it's, it'll be the cost that goes along with it. They're exploring, trying to get state funding, they're trying to get federal funding, and we're not sure where that goes. The AGs agreed to spend $50,000 to try and do research on this. It's, trying to give you an idea of what it would cost us if it ever came to fruition and we actually had to pay for it. It's approximately, the one-time cost to get the cameras, I'm guessing, is, would be $7,000. That would be all the cameras in the frontline cars and 12 of our officers having, having the body cam. The cost of that...
How many officers?
What's that, Sharon?
I, I, I heard he, I wasn't sure, did he say both, meaning two people, or did he say 12 officers?
I think he said 12, he said 12.
12 cameras, absolutely. So, and that would be, that would be approximately $100 a, a month per each officer. So you're talking, each year, the cost would be approximately $15,000 for here in Hopkinton.
Those are leased?
I'm sorry?
Are they leased?
No, no, this is, the cameras themselves are fairly inexpensive when you consider that. The cost is really, is the software...
Recording of all the information.
Yeah, we have, it has to be recorded, and they...
You have to store it.
You have to store it, and it has to be made available for open records.
Right.
So these, that's the bigger, that's the lion's share of what you're, you're talking about, and that's a every-year cost, obviously. So there's upside to it, there's downside to it. So I want to bring it towards you, this is, this is not something that's going to be enacted next month, or the month after that, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of talk going back and forth, but one of the requirements is that I do bring it here to the council, let you know that this is being explored.
So Chief Palmer, are you going to be, are you going to be submitting that as part of the budget for next year, starting in January?
Oh, no, no.
When we start our budget process?
No, he said no.
No, that, it's not coming that fast, and we're, as I said before, is that we're, we're hoping to get some state or federal funding that goes along with that, so that would either take care of the whole thing, or, or a part of that, we don't know. They may mandate that to us, and they could throw the whole thing back on the municipalities. I hope that's not the case, but...
So let me be clear, so having the cameras in the cars is 7,000, but then having the cameras on the man, on our manpower, on the 12 policemen, would be the one that is closer to 15,000 a year?
No, it, the total...
Together, right?
Hold on, hold on.
Let him answer.
Total for the cameras, both in the cruiser and on the body, is all totally gonna be approximately $15,000, that could change, it can go up and down. The 15,000 annual goes to the storage of...
Of all that equipment.
Of all the equipment.
I see. So it's about 15, and then 15 a year.
Correct. And I assume those cameras would last, you know, hopefully five or 10 years.
Unless they're broken.
I suspect that depending on the election results tomorrow nationally, that, and depending on the results, that there will be federal funds for this purpose.
I would agree.
So, yeah.
It's hope.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, it's been talked about.
Oh, yeah, I absolutely think so.
So depending on who wins, so we wait and see.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So it's not mandated right now, chief, right?
No, no, it is not.
Are any communities mandated to have body cams?
No, the only department that actually has any right now is Providence, they have a small portion of their first-line officers have it. I know that state police is, is doing a pilot with Axon for the body cams and Motorola for the in-service, or in cruiser cameras. So it's a pilot, and we'll feed off of those, but obviously what has to come with that is policies and...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It takes research.
As far as you know, as far as the documentation, storage of those, you know, well, they're on each shift, everybody's gonna have it on, so all that material has to be stored, whether it's no calls or some calls, it's all gonna be recorded and stored. I guess, would that be, I assume it'd be on the cloud, right? Have you ever gotten?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct. And it's not gonna be running continuously, the, the cameras in the car, they usually are activated by the lights and sirens.
Oh, I see, okay.
The body cams do have to be manually activated.
Okay, so when they make a stop, they put it on and...
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay. And any other further questions for Chief Palmer? Okay, thank you, chief, for everything, I appreciate the update.
Thank you, it's nice to see you at our last meeting.
Okay, number three, discuss and consider setting a hearing date for proposed zoning ordinance text amendment filed by Peter Squirts, Esquire, on behalf of Tom and Cynthia Skulco, 192 Woodville Road, Hopkinton, Rhode Island, and 132 E 95th Street, New York, New York, to amend the table of permitted uses as to solar energy systems and to update the review and approval process for solar energy systems throughout town. This proposed zoning ordinance text amendment is introduced and sponsored by Council Vice President Scott Bill Ehrst. Scott, would you like to say?
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I haven't read this, I know it's very lengthy. To give you a little background, what happened was, received an email to Counselor Davis and myself from Attorney Squirts, and asked us if we would introduce that. So people understand the mechanics of putting something on the agenda, something like this, you have to have a town council member sponsor it. Now, this is quite lengthy, and like, and I haven't read it in, and I did it as a courtesy. A lot of times, I know in some state legislatures, if somebody asks you to introduce a bill, you do it as a courtesy, but you don't necessarily endorse it. But I would like to, I, I believe Attorney Squirts is, is gonna be present, but I, before I do, I'd like to ask our Solicitor McAllister about, you know, the procedural things from his perspective, and also whether or not we should set a date. I guess my impression, talking to Solicitor McAllister, we should set a date, but the interesting thing is, this is quite lengthy, so, you know, one of the other counselors tonight said maybe we should, you know, have a workshop or a hearing, I forgot the wording, but I'm gonna defer to Solicitor McAllister that can give some enlightenment how this should proceed. Thank you.
Kevin?
Hi, Kevin McAllister, Town Solicitor. This, this situation that this particular application falls under, under the town charter, section 3210 of the town charter requires an ordinance of this nature, which is not specific to one parcel of land, rather, this, this proposal is a comprehensive townwide zoning ordinance that has implications for similarly zoned properties throughout the town. So in other words, these two individuals, the two clients of Attorney Squirts, this isn't about their property specifically, it's about townwide zoning changes that they're proposing. So when, when it's a general comprehensive zoning ordinance like that, the town charter, again, it's section 3210, requires a councilperson to sponsor it. Now, once it's, the application's accepted and sponsored like this and introduced tonight as it's being done, the state zoning ordinances take, take over, and this now goes into the pipeline where it goes through the process we're all familiar with, where it has to go now to the planning board for an advisory opinion, and then so many days after that, according to the statute, state statute, has to come back to the council for a public hearing and, and decision. So this gets the ball rolling, so to speak, if, and, and what is only before the council tonight is to set a date to proceed, so that's the process you're all...
Yeah, this is Frank. I mean, it's so comprehensive, and, and obviously today's our last meeting, it just seems to not make a whole heck of a lot of sense for us to schedule something that the next council really needs to deal with and really schedule themselves, because, again, I read a few attachments, and it's so overwhelming that it is not really, I don't see the real point of this current council scheduling something, but maybe you could clarify that, you know?
Yeah, it's, I just, it's, the new council, when they take it up, they have the opportunity to set a new date after that, if, if they're not ready to go on it. They have to work hand in hand with Attorney Squirts representing the applicants and doing that, presumably he'll be amenable to, to whatever timetable the new council wants to set, but this is basically just a lateral where you're handing it off to the new council and take it from there. But you have to schedule, to comply with the state statute, you have to schedule a date, I would suggest a date in early December, on a regular council meeting for them to take a look at it in terms of future scheduling, but I, I think the first step is it, is for it to go to the planning board, so let me, let me just amend what I said. It's gotta go to the planning board, I think it's probably gonna end up on their agenda for their December meeting, and then after that, the planning board and/or the council can work cooperatively... And then after that, um, the planning board and/or the council can work cooperatively with Attorney Squirts to, to reschedule if needed. Uh, but I think this has got to head, under state law, has to head to the planning board for its advisory opinion process. So I, I, my recommendation is you, you just send it to the planning board for a consideration, uh, a public hearing on the advisory opinion at its December meeting. I think there's been some preliminary work already done, uh, through Lisa on that, if I'm not mistaken.
Should we?
It was, yeah.
So we can't, can we just table this? I mean.
No.
We can't.
You can't. State law does not allow you to do that.
So, and at this point, we don't have any discussion about it? We just have to.
No, it's you. You send it to the planning board. I, I think Lisa can give you the date of their next meeting in December.
Unless, um, Counselor Tom Hurst decides to, um, not to sponsor it tonight and, and instead send it to the, to the next council, because they're going to need workshops on this.
Oh, yeah.
It's very complex.
It's not, it's not just, it's not just complex.
Yes, Kevin.
Now, I, but this, there's a process that has to be, uh, there's a process that has to be followed. The process involving, uh, Councilman Hurst's sponsorship is, he's already, he's already committed to sponsor it. Uh, so that makes it an official filing with the town. The state, stat, uh, stat, zoning statute, uh, for scheduling, uh, takes over here. So it just has to go to the planning board. Uh, now dates can be changed and moved with the, with the cooperation of the applicants going forward, uh, however they want to do it. But the, we do not have any discretion. Uh, he, he, he's already committed in writing, Council, Council Vice President Hurst is already committed in writing to sponsor it. That's the done deal. So this is, I, you really don't have any discretion but to send it to the planning board for its December meeting, under state law.
You can't send it to the planning board in January?
December.
I'm asking a question.
The, the date can be moved, I think, tonight. You don't negotiate the dates tonight. That's up to the planning board, uh, uh, what it wants to do leading to its December meeting. But you don't, you don't do that now. The state statute has very strict timelines that have to be followed. I think 45 days from its introduction has to be heard by the planning board. So you can't just ignore that.
No, I'm not trying to ignore it. I just, the, the planning board has a lot on its plate as it is. And I was just wondering if, 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 uh, December is very, seems like, you know, in a minute. Um, I just was wondering if the planning board has any discretion to, to at least do their part in January? That's, that was just my question.
If, if they want to work that out with the applicant's attorney, they can try that. But right now, we're not, we can't, we can't manage that. So my advice to you is to send it to the planning board for its December, uh, December meeting.
Lisa, when are the planning, when is the planning board meeting?
In December, it would be December 2nd, but I've already sent this to the planning board. My memo is dated October 16th, and that was sent over to the planning board. I don't know when they've scheduled it for. It may be for their November meeting. But I don't know.
Can I, uh, this is, uh, Peter Squirts.
Peter, you're breaking, you're breaking up, Peter. I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, better. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, uh, thank you for, for having us on the agenda tonight. I'd like to thank, uh, the council president, um, uh, Counselor, uh, Hurst and, and the rest of the council. I'd also like to, uh, and thank you, Kevin. I, I agree with what Kevin said. There is the statute that, that's triggered by this. But i- it's not our intent to, um, to overwhelm the board and, and to, um, uh, to overwhelm the, the new council or anything along those lines. So, uh, Kevin was correct when he said that we're willing to work with the, um, uh, with the planning board or the new council to, to fit it within their schedule. Um, but, um, he's also correct that, that this is kind of the first step that triggers a statutory process that, um, uh, that then we can address, uh, later on down the line and which we're more than willing to, um, to work with the planning board and the council on. And, and I would just, just for information purposes, I was given a note that, um, uh, it is going to be on the, uh, planning board's November agenda, I believe. But I don't know if they're going to have a substantive discussion or if they're just going to continue with that to their December agenda. But either way, um, you know, w- we're willing to work with the town. This, this is just, uh, to check the box required by the statute and, and start the conversation.
Okay, thanks, Peter. Um, you want to just schedule it for 12, too? Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
So Kevin, someone from, who does not vote in town, this is not their primary residence, someone from Iowa can come to a town council member and bring this, something like this forward, this draft amendment to our entire ordinances. And we are not able to prevent or pause to say, this is so complex. And it has already, just in my cursory reading, because it's in my packet, I do a cursory reading of it. They have already abrogated the rights of people who have solar on their roofs. They now would no longer be able to get money back from the grid because they're selling to the grid. It's not 100% into their home. And these are people who already have solar on their roof. You've abrogated the farmers' rights. I mean, it is, it is appalling. And it is far too complex for a new council that is, first of all, finding a new town manager, possibly whomever else they would like, and do everything by, um, with COVID, by phone or by not meeting. This is appalling. I think it just should be withdrawn and paused. I, I can quite understand that someone from Iowa wants to, or whomever, or wherever, who doesn't live in this town, wants to bring an ordinance that's, you know, 10 pages, 12 pages thick to change our ordinances and is allowed to do that, obviously. But I think that this is ridiculous. And if we have to set a hearing date for a council that has its own right to choose what it wishes to do, um, I have, I, I just think this is just appalling.
I think legally we don't have a choice, so we'll just pick a date and, uh, let the new council have at it. Okay, how about December 2022?
Well, that's not what the statute.
We'd have to, you know, second meeting in January.
Sure.
You know? No, I think it's, it is ridiculous.
That's horrible. That's a terrible thing to do to the council. I mean, I do wish them well, and that's ridiculous.
Well, and I know I probably shouldn't have done it, but the email was sent to Sharon and I, and I believe that representing constituents, and I believe that their property owners in town, I don't know.
They live in New York. They live in New York.
But they own, they own property in the Hopkingtons.
But anyway, I will study this.
Hold on, guys, guys and gals.
I understand the concern, but I was trying to be a nice guy and be good in customer service. So, so that's what it is from.
Not our problem.
And I, I, I will look at, I will look it over, but from what I heard, it's not my, uh, well, I'm not going to even state an opinion because you can get in trouble stating an opinion before you hear.
Well, you haven't read it, so there you go.
But anyways, I try to be a nice guy. I try to listen to the public. And when I don't do what the public wants, I try to have a good reason. Thank you.
Yeah, I know. I, I, I did a, a brief cursory review, and I think if it affects the farmers like I think it's going to, that's a problem. And you're going to have a mutiny on your hands.
And every residents who ever wants to put solar on their roof, he's got to hire an engineer and go through all sorts of.
But they can't, they can't sell it back to the grid and make money on it, which is what they do, and they should.
But we'll, Lisa, I guess we'll, um, we'll, um, discuss and, and move this, uh, process over to the planning board on the second meeting in January, whenever that is.
I don't think that you can do that, that.
Maybe for just tomorrow.
Late. I believe that they've already set it.
Okay, all right.
So at this point, it's before you to set a hearing date for, as a council.
Yes.
For the council hearing.
Second meeting in January.
That's what.
For the council.
Right.
Yeah, gives them time.
Is that within the statutory? Is it? 65 days?
Well, ba- based on what Attorney Squirts just said, I think it's, the second week in, in, in second meeting in January is probably, and let him speak for himself if, if you would, please. Uh, I think it's fine to set it for the second meeting of the council in January, subject to, assuming he, uh, agrees, that's okay.
Okay.
That's January 18th?
That's the 18th.
That would be the 19th because not Luther King Day, I believe, would be the 18th.
I was thinking that. Okay, January 19th, okay.
Right. Peter?
Hi, Mr. Council President, um, uh, I, I would agree to that. Uh, just to respond briefly to some of the comments, um, you know, I, I, I wouldn't expect that everyone would, um, agree to every piece in this since it has been such, um, an intensely debated issue in town. Um, and I, I wouldn't expect that this, um, necessarily would be the end product that comes out. You know, of course, the, the council isn't obligated to approve, um, anything that's proposed, or they could change it as well. Um, but, uh, at least from my client's perspective, uh, they are taxpayers in town. They do pay a substantial amount of taxes in town. And, um, uh, from their perspective, they think it's a conversation worth having. Um, so that's why we appreciate the council, uh, allowing us to, um, have that conversation.
Okay. All right, so I guess we'll do the second meeting in, um, January for the new council, which is the, um, the 19th. The 19th.
To the Tuesday.
Right, the 19th, correct, yep. And we'll, 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 uh, we'll tackle Scott after the meeting in the parking lot. We're going to have a, we're going to have a, an M and A brawl in the parking lot.
But I, I, I would.
I'm just kidding.
Well, you know, he's locked me in a room with Barbara, and that would be cruel and unusual punishment. But, uh, seriously, you know, uh, I believe that all ideas can be able to be in the public place and let people debate them. And, uh, uh, and that was my motivation. And from what I'm hearing, it doesn't seem like the stuff I would support. But, uh, if you're politically secure, you're intellectually secure, even legal secure, which, and I'm not a lawyer, uh, put forward your ideas. And, uh, but I believe that the people in this town are very big on property rights. And to what extent you restrict property rights, and I'm making this as a general statement, people rebel against it unless you really have a strong public interest. Because this town has to meet with people of all income levels, every race, ethnicity, es- ethnicity, uh, intellectual attainment, et cetera, all those, all the demographics. And, uh, that's what's great about Hopkinton. And that's why a lot of people come here, and that's why a lot of people like, like myself, that grew up here, appreciate this town. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah. All right, so, so that, um, that meeting date has been scheduled for the planning board. Uh, thanks all for your input. Thank you, Peter.
That was for the council.
Yes, for the council.
Correct?
Correct, yep. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Hey, okay, nice.
Thank you. Okay, next up, number four, discuss and consider setting a hearing date for a proposed zoning ordinance text amendment to prohibit any additional gas, diesel stations and allow electric charging stations in commercial manufacturing and neighborhood business zones, including the two current gas stations. This proposed zoning ordinance text amendment is introduced and sponsored by Counselor Thompson. Sylvia?
Uh, it's, it's pretty simple. It's, and it's one page, not 21. But, um, yeah, it, it, in the district use table, I'm just suggesting that, uh, that we prohibit any new, uh, gas station, diesel stations, but we allow electric, uh, charging stations. So, uh, that's the purpose of it. And, um, uh, we can, and it should be, uh, hopefully a simple matter. Uh, Lisa, did it already go to the planning board?
No.
How come? Scott's win.
Uh, I've been dealing with, I've been dealing with elections.
Okay, all right, that's fine. That, no problem.
Yep.
It'll eventually.
I will send it on to them.
That's fine, after you, like, get some sleep. Have a day off or something.
Yeah, Friday.
Okay, that's fine. So, um, why don't we just, um, suggest that the, um, uh, uh, hearing date for the, I don't know, second meeting in February? And either, if the regular council meeting is, that'll give everybody time to do whatever they need to do, planning board, et cetera.
That's the 15th.
Okay.
Yeah, just not on Washington's birthday or anything, right?
Well, whatever, it's the second meeting in February.
President's Day, President's Day is the 15th, sorry. So it would have to be.
That'll be the 16th.
15th, right. Okay.
Can I ask? Isn't, isn't? Okay, you said the second meeting, okay.
Yeah, yeah, the 16th because of 15.
Okay, okay, okay.
President's Day is the 15th, right.
Okay, all right.
Okay, is everybody?
Thank you.
Okay, is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thanks, Sylvia. Putting more work on the council, the next council?
Well, at least it's an easy one.
Yeah, yeah, right. Um, all right, uh, let's see. Public forum, we're at public forum. Looks like Mr. Morrow, Joe Morrow. Joe, you out there? Joe?
Good evening, good evening. It's Joe Morrow, Old Depot Road.
Hi, Joe.
Uh, how's everyone doing tonight?
Very well.
Good. Um, I only needed a few minutes, but I added something, uh, to my notes as usual. Um, I just want to clarify something that the attorney just said. The debate in town has been over slower, has been about changing residential property to commercial. We've never had discussions, uh, except on the new PSES, but we have not had discussions on, uh, a homeowner installing, uh, rooftop solar. So I want to clarify that, first of all. Um, I just wanted to spend a few minutes to talk about the agenda item that's going to be following the public forum. My wife and I have lived in Hopkinton since May of 2000. Um, like a lot of residents, I go to the town hall every quarter, pay my taxes, and that was my involvement with our town. I was wrong for not being involved sooner. I became involved in June 2018 when there was an attempt to change residential property across from us to commercial special for solar. The past 22, 29 months have been difficult for our residents, town employees, members of boards and commissions, and our town council members. I've made a lot of new friends since June of 2018. I am pleased to say that I now know the names of every employee in our town hall. Uh, a special shout out to Lisa and her staff for providing the root beer barrel candy that I used to get. I have not always, I have not always agreed with some members of our boards and commissions in our town council. I like to say we can agree to disagree, but let's talk about it. Boy, have we talked. I am sure there are many people who don't agree with some of the things that I may have done or said, but we discussed the issues. The election of 2018 had five candidates for our town council. This time we have eight candidates and good luck to all. I hope the three candidates that are not elected stay involved in our town and fill some of the vacancies on our boards and commissions. I'd also like to say good luck to our town manager, Bill McGary, in his retirement. There are three members of our council tonight that have decided not to run for reelection. Sharon Davis has completed her first term and Scott has served seven terms over the years, and they hope to be reelected. Sylvia Thompson has been on the council for 22 years, and I know there's going to be a discussion following this, but she served many, many years before that. Barbara has been on the council for 14 years, and speaking with Frank, he's been on 10 years plus the planning board. I would like to thank all of the current members of our council for their service and especially Sylvia, Barbara, and Frank for their many, many years of being involved in our town. And good luck to all and thanks again.
Thank you, Joe, for the kind words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very sweet of you. Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else for public forum? I see no hands. Okay, next up, departing council members' thoughts, reflections, and remarks. Um, departing town council members Frank, Sylvia, and Barbara will have an opportunity to share their respective parting thoughts, reflections, and remarks as their term in office draws to a close. Who would like to start? Barbara?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
That's fine. Um, yeah, I thought it was nice that Frank put that on the agenda, and this is our last meeting, um, other than the next one where we turn it all over to five new faces, or three new faces and two older faces. I hope everyone does well. Um, I ran for council fourteen years ago during the big box controversy. Uh, people were as riled then as they are now. Today, we don't have large retail stores, or truck stops, or film studios, or welcome centers, um, but we do have Ray Quinlan and Hopkinton Industrial Park, B two B Gateway, and solar facilities with a manufacturing plant or two. No new office buildings, stores, banks, pharmacies, hotels, restaurants, or healthcare facilities. We have Wood River Health, which needs to expand, and Boneyard Barbecue, which is closed. I hope the new council can attract these businesses and find the land and newly zoned areas you will need to support these critical community services. We couldn't, maybe you can. Before running for council, I attended school board meetings, recreation, planning, and zoning meetings, chaired the Economic Development Commission to learn all I could about Hopkinton. Certainly, you want to make a change, so did I. There is much to know about our town and its priorities in order to best serve all of its citizens. Uh, you will inherit a fine municipal staff. The clerk's office, run by Lisa Cook Martin, has the kindest and most amenable and helpful persons a citizen could hope to meet. Our assessor Liz Monte is a steel magnolia, fair and soft-spoken, but with a powerful backbone. You never cross that woman. Mary Lynn Caswell, our amenable tax collector, is so compassionate. She always works with anyone who has trouble paying taxes. At Public Works, led by Tim Teft and now Dave Caswell, the men and women who are out all hours of the night and day physically caring for this town, they are really my heroes. Our chief Palmer and the police department know this town and all its citizens and neighborhoods personally. Each police shift knows its issues and has kept the town quiet, calm, and protected for years. Our recreation department is simply a joy for children to seniors and everyone in between. Mary Sawyer has been a godsend during all of her decades with the town. Brian Rosso is a superb and creative financial officer, and you never know what he'll come up with next. Jim Lampier at Planning tries to keep everyone on track and happy, and Sherry Distarden and Anthony Centilli at the Building and Zoning Office try to solve problems and keep everyone apprised of our unique and complex zoning laws. Ron McDonald has kept us ready for emergencies, and Chris Shibe performs IT magic. I have no idea what he does. Over the last fourteen years, we have kept Hopkinton's budget balanced and in the black. Just like a good household budget, we save for all our large and small expenditures. We did not pay for major equipment, you know, or police cars using bonds. Bonds are for items that still have a purpose after twenty years, like schools, roads, and land. This council has also saved almost a million and a half dollars for the new addition to the town hall. You'll need another two hundred thousand or so, and probably a new set of plans since the existing ones are over eight years old. Municipal taxes are always your issue for ambulance service, dead trees, snow, and other hazards, the water line, equipment, personnel, school buildings, school taxes, school problems, plus mental health, marijuana, opiates, counseling, IT services, manpower, buildings, and office space. Solar facilities and rezoning R F R eighty have been the primary issue in this election cycle, but our bottom line problem results from the lack of a commercial tax base. Homes and local small businesses cannot support Hopkinton, but "Don't cut down the trees, raise my taxes" slogan won't work for most of my citizens, but new ideas and new perspectives are great. You too will have to listen to those who are angry, those who are quiet, and those who do not speak at all. You serve all of them, all the time, with every vote, with every consideration, with every budget, with every choice you make at this council table. Listen to your attorney. Pat Buckley for the first eight years and Kevin McAllister for the last six have served us well and kept us on legally sound footing. We win our cases. Of course you'll argue with them, but they have the town and your best interests at heart. I hope you will all make a positive difference, and I hope you all will find joy and usefulness as you serve. Let your points of view evolve as you gather more data. Compromise, please, and don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I wish you all well. And to all of Hopkinton, thank you for your support and your trust over many years. It has been an honor, a challenge, and a formidable pleasure. Respectfully, Barbara Capalvo.
Very nice.
Thank you, Barbara. You're always prepared. I, uh, have a busy, busy workday, so I'm not quite as prepared, but I'll, I'll let Sylvia go because I know you probably have some comments you've written down.
Yeah, I made some notes and notes and- You know, um, I, I have to say that, um, to start, that, uh, the first, well, let's see, the last three years or so, um, that we've been dealing with these solar applications, this council, the last council, um, it, it, it got heated, and, and there was a split in town, and there was the, uh, pro-solar, uh, for economic reasons, lowering the tax rate, and then there was the anti-solar. Um, and, eh, while we were going through that process, uh, and, and from the, uh, pro-solar, uh, uh, contingent, um, there were incidents of intimidation and following, uh, people when they left, uh, these solar hearings. Um, there was even a, uh, complaint made to the police department to investigate, uh, investigate a counselor, um, which proved, uh, that he was innocent and, and not guilty of anything. Um, and then on the other side, uh, the anti-solar, uh, folks, um, there was an abutter that threatened to kill an individual who, who was a landowner and a solar developer, and it happened at a meeting. And then, uh, even myself, um, I was threatened with physical violence on two occasions. And in all those occasions, in all those meetings, and by the way, far as I know, there haven't been any more instances of, uh, complaints and violence. I believe that it's, that it's chilled, uh, for quite, quite some time. But during all of that, um, it was our police department who calmly and professionally investigated or halted any further, uh, problems. And at meetings, um, I remember distinctly, we had a full house, and, um, someone would get excited and start yelling from the back, and the chief would just walk up and put his hand gently on their shoulder and whisper to them, and, and they'd calm down. So, it didn't turn into, which he knows quite well, that once something starts, it can kind of fester and get louder and louder. But the chief, um, was always there, um, to, um, just keep a check on things and, and, and calm things down, and appreciate it very much. Um, however, put that aside, um, I've, I've been very fortunate, um, and grateful to, um, a long list of, of people that helped me personally, and, and it's, and it started in high school at the Cherahoe School, where teachers, um, found that I was, I had boundless energy and wanted to do something, and so they'd always give me something to do. Um, but, um, they, they were, um, for students who, who needed perhaps, uh, some direction, um, they were there for me, and it was multiple teachers. And, and I know that still exists to this day throughout the school system, the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. And, um, and I'm grateful for that. And, and, and even, um, uh, when a foster family, uh, took me in, uh, when I was in, uh, senior, um, it's those sorts of folks that live throughout our town and throughout the region who will, uh, lend a hand, and it still, it still happens. Um, I, and, and by the time I got to, uh, after I was married and lived, you know, had our own home in town, um, and having children, it was around nineteen seventy-nine that, um, it was time to, because I was, life was good, and, and I wanted to do something. Um, and, uh, started with, um, nonprofits, uh, like, uh, Paraplegic Association, and, and, um, there's just so many opportunities for people to do so many different things. Um, and, um, outreach to the severely disabled, um, working with the Governor's Commission on the Handicap, and, and I worked with an officer from the Ork Police Department, and we were teaching self-defense to the severely disabled, people with, um, cerebral palsy and things like that. And so, and he was training me at the same time. And, and with that knowledge, then I brought it to Canachia Cliffs and worked with the elderly to teach them self-defense. And it was, eh, it was fun. I mean, all these activities, and by the way, they're free, they're, you volunteer. Um, and it was those sorts of things, um, all the way from, um, there was a time in the eighties when I heard about community development block grants. And, and through the governor's office, I mean, I was always nosing around, and, and the, um, governor's office was concerned that, and wanted to, wanted, uh, money, the community development block grants to come to the southern part of the state. It was something that, um, we didn't, towns didn't know about. Um, it was federal money that went to the cities, and they wanted to open it up to the communities. And when I found out about it, I was lucky enough to be in the right place at the right time, and Hopkinton was, I, because I asked, and it, it's just one of those things that something kind of falls in your lap, and I asked if Hopkinton could join the pilot, pilot group with these other towns, and it was West Philly and South Kingston, and, and Charles Town, there were three communities, and they let Hopkinton in. So, we were able to get community development block grants, uh, for the home repair program, and that was when it started. Um, and with that knowledge, so we, we entered into it, and we were, uh, uh, received money. So, the following year, I went to West Greenwich, and I said, you know, I could write you a grant, and you can have a home repair program. And the council's just like, hey, great, and it happened. And then I was like, well, let's go to Richmond. So, then I went to Richmond, and when I went to Richmond to do the same thing, um, I got a call from, um, South County Community Action Director, and he said, we were going to do that. Why don't you come on our board? And I'm like, sure. So, I mean, it's just like one thing leads to another and another, and, and all of that, um, is actually a lot of fun. I mean, you know, to think that, and we all know now, grants, people, I mean, um, uh, the planner, um, the rec department, our, our staff is, is accessing, um, grants and writing, and we're actually for the playgrounds, and all of this money is coming into our town, and, and it's a wonderful thing. Um, some of the other things that, um, I mean, I even interned at Wood River Health when I was going to the University of Rhode Island. Um, and the funny thing is that even though I had interned at Wood River, and, and they're lovely and wonderful, but there was a time, um, when people, and that it goes to protesting, and it goes to, um, people rising up because of an issue like with solar right now. But there was a time, let's see, there was the, um, uh, federal prison back, oh, jeez, uh, early eighties, I'm trying, no, it was mid, maybe mid or late eighties, there was the federal prison that wanted to be put on the Brushy Brook property, and we rose up. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. Um, and then there was the, um, trying to think, oh, uh, the dog track, um, down at Exit One, where Hopkinton Industrial Park is now. We rose up, people are excited, no, we won't, don't want a dog track, and we, we didn't get the dog track. We know about the, um, so there's been, over the years, there've been things that have come up, and people, um, rise up and, and organize. And one of the times that we organized was against the Board of Directors of Wood River Health, and that was mid-eighties, when they wanted to merge with the Wesley Hospital. They'd fired the director, they wanted to move, uh, merge with the Wesley Hospital, and they wanted to get rid of the dental program with the founder, he'd just started. And we rose up, and no, the director didn't get her job back, but the dental problem, uh, dental program, we were just so insistent. There were about, we had about two hundred volunteers and, eh, as a group, and, um, we even picketed, uh, the board meetings. Um, and, and it was just, people were very upset about an injustice, they thought, in town, but we, but with all of that, hopefully, uh, a lot of positive things happened. And as for the, as for being on the council, um, the way that I started with all these nonprofits and things, but, I mean, I was on the Tax Board of Review, I was on the Water Study Committee, so it's a very good place to start. Anybody out there who, I mean, there's always a need for volunteers. Uh, obviously, we have a number of vacancies on our boards and commissions, but it's a great way to learn about how things work in your own town in government. Um, but to all the folks along the way, um, that are, that, and, and that I met over all these years, they were always dedicated to a, um, a, a purpose, and would insist in, in, like the big box issue. I wasn't involved in that controversy at all, um, with, for or against. Um, but it, it, I found that, uh, through my, uh, work, that, um, it can be exciting, um, and very worthwhile, and all along the way, there were so many wonderful people, um, that you meet along the way. So, I want to thank, um, all those folks that lend me a hand so that I could turn around and say, well, you know, I'm in a good place, and now I can do something. Um, and, and it can be very rewarding. So, I'm hoping, I mean, we're having tough times with, with the virus and everything, but, but think about, um, how you might want to, um, assist some of these boards, the commissions, the nonprofits. There's so many nonprofits that, uh, do so much. Uh, the Warm Shelter, we've got lots of volunteers that, uh, um, that still, uh, back when we, um, started the Warm Shelter and, and made it into a twenty-four hour, uh, seven-day-a-week, um, facility, where it was, eh, I don't know, who knows, but it was run initially in sev- seven different churches, um, until we could get a building and, and do the Warm Shelter. But there are still, like Tammy Walsh, she's still volunteering at the Warm Shelter. Um, and she started at the very beginning, and, and I'm sure there are others. Um, so anyway, there's plenty to do out there, and, um, when you get a chance, think about how you might want to get involved. Thank you.
Thanks, Sylvia. Yeah, it's hard to, hard, tough acts to follow here with Barbara and Sylvia, but, you know, I, I've been involved in, in town government about, uh, ten years. Happened to get involved by accident. My neighbor had asked me to, um, perhaps interview, uh, I think it was Bill Felkner, who was on the council and resigned after twelve months in, in office. So, when, when you're in office and you resign after twelve months, it's just an appointment. So, I basically came in and interviewed with the council, and I believe I, I did get the, um, position, and that was for basically just about a year. I ran, uh, in the next election, lost, went on the planning board for about, you know, six months, eight months, uh, or so, and then, uh, ran in another election and subsequently got, got elected. Um, you know, last eight years as president, uh, four terms, been unbelievable. Dealing with, you know, every department head and, uh, solicitor's office, and, and because the town council president doesn't have a board or commission under their purview to, uh, be the liaison, the council president is the personnel person for the town. So, I get involved in with a manager and myself and the solicitor, a lot of personnel issues. So, um, it's been amazingly rewarding and, and a learning experience, and, um, you know, I, I hope that, uh, the new council, uh, embraces all, all that the town has to offer and, and, and doesn't just come in and, and, and start to think that they know it all. I mean, I'm still learning things after ten years, and I think if you ask anyone honestly, uh, after all these years, even Sylvia, that's been twenty-two, there's not, there's not a week or month that goes by that something doesn't come up that you said, hey, jeez, I didn't know that, you know? It's just, it's just a- It's just, it's just, it's a moving target, and it's really, uh, like I said, it's just an unbelievable place. And I've, I've met some wonderful people, every department head, um, has been supportive, and, um, and I look forward to, uh, a little bit of break, uh, play some golf, and, um, hopefully, uh, bug my son who's in college maybe a little bit more. And, uh, but anyway, no, I, it's just been an unbelievable experience, and, and, um, and, and we're leaving the town in good shape, you know, we've got just shy of five million dollars in our fund balance. Um, uh, it's going to be a challenging year next year for, for budgets. COVID has hit our rec department, the state in their, um, uh, vehicle, uh, reimbursements for, um, motor vehicle tax reimbursements. Um, it's also going to be tough for education reimbursements. We still don't know to this day, um, what the state's going to do. Um, and, and with all the businesses, you know, operating on a part-time basis for the most part, it's going to be very difficult. Um, so, um, I just, you know, my, my, my wish is that the new council, and I wish everyone that wants to be in office, and I know that some are going to get disappointed because there's eight running, I think, or nine, uh, running for the council. Some will get disappointed, but I hope all that, uh, want to get in, get in, and I hope that you just embrace the, um, the experience and the learning experience, and, and just, uh, ask a lot of questions. That's what people are here for. And, um, and, and just, uh, you know, learn as you go, and, and be respectful of, of what opinions they have because they're, they're valued, and, uh, like I said, the solicitor, manager, department heads have been invaluable to me for the last eight years, and it's just, uh, just, they're just amazing people. And, uh, I'll miss them, so. That's that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other thoughts?
Well, uh, certainly, uh, I would say that, that it's been an interesting experience, and I'm sure it sometimes you've wanted to strangle me, and I probably felt the same way, but, uh, you know, you, you can have political campaigns, you can voice your opinion, but once you sit on the town council, and particularly over a number of years, uh, you really fully appreciate, uh, the time, the effort, uh, and the, and to appreciate the fact you can't do what people want. Number one, and I've always, and I believe it's a very important point, whoever gets elected, there's four other members of the town council. They might not see eye to eye to you, they might not have the same background as you, or same perspectives, or whatever. Uh, some people really go for it, and a lot of times, sometimes you wonder why they're there. But the fact of the matter is that, uh, uh, nobody can deny that Franklin, Frank T. Landolfi, Sylvia K. Thompson, Barbara Ann Capalvo, uh, have taken their council duties very seriously. And, uh, and no person, uh, even if they disagree with them, whether it's on solar or whatever, can take that away from them, and, uh, I probably should thank them for not strangling me through the years, but, uh...
We came, we came close.
Okay, but I, I just want to note, because I got to tease Sylvia a little bit, you know, she graduated the year after me in high school, so, uh...
Just a little younger.
Slightly, only one grade, so, but anyways, uh...
And Lisa too graduated with you.
Yeah, a couple of years behind us, so, but, uh...
Didn't she graduate the same year?
No, no, Lisa's first husband Lloyd Cook was on the town council, got, got killed in office. He was in my class, the class of seventy-one, and class seventy-one is the class of Brian McEwen, who's on the Wesley Town Council, is, uh, running for reelection. He's on the Wesley Town Council. He was in my class, and my neighbor, his mother was on the Hopkin and Town Council right here, and Barbara Watrous was on the Hopkin and Town Council. So there's four people of the Cherahoe class of nineteen seventy-one. There were two of us are present council members, and, uh, one's deceased, and Barbara, uh, Barbara Watrous is, uh, still with us, and she's very involved in the Daughters of the American Revolution, but, uh, and you know, uh, unless you really sit on the town council, you don't fully appreciate, uh, the responsibility you have and the work, and you have to work with a lot of, uh, people, so it's not a walk in the park. It's a great honor, but, uh, it's a lot of responsibility. And, uh, you can't always do what you want to do. There's other people have their opinion, and you just got to deal with it. But I thank you three for your service at the Town of Hopkin. Thank you.
Thanks Scott.
Thank you Scott. Appreciate the kind words. Okay. Um, I think that's about it, folks. Jeez, all right.
Uh, I move to adjourn in honor of William A. McGary, our retiring town manager, and in memory of Kevin J. Kennedy, Roger Gibson, Madri Enricowski, and Hazel N. Dalthett.
Oh, Hazel Dalthett?
Oh, I'm so sorry. A second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night.
So Lisa, what year did you graduate?
Good night.
Seventy-three. What was it?
Seventy-three.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm just a baby.
Yeah, yeah, right, thanks, Lisa. Put those documents under your door, okay?
Thank you. Have a good night all.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.